Welcome and good evening to the June 7, 2022 City of Shakopee City Council Meeting. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here, thank you very much. Now, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of agenda, any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
No changes from staff, sir.
Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second from Counselor Brennan. Further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries, the agenda's been approved. Moving ahead to item number four, the consent agenda, there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
I'd like to pull for a two, please.
Four A two. Others? Counselor Lehman?
One question about four B one.
You have a question or you want it off?
I'll take it off and ask.
Off, on four A one?
Four B one.
Four B one. Just a minute. Thank you very much. Counselor Whiting?
I make a motion to approve the consent business unless Mr. Lehman had something else to pull?
As amended, right?
As amended, correct.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion by Counselor Whiting, a second by Counselor Lehman for the amended consent agenda. There no other discussion? Before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, these are the consent agenda items for seven June of 2022. Four A one approves the city council meeting minutes for seventeen May of 2022. Four A three adopts resolution R 2022 tax zero eight one, accepting bids and awarding a contract in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to McPhillips Roofing for city facility roof replacement. Four B two approves road closures on Saturday, July sixteenth, August twentieth, September seventeenth, and October eighth from ten a.m. to five p.m. to allow food trucks in the designated areas of First Avenue. Four B three approves a purchase contract with Tyler Technologies for modules for rental housing and code enforcement for seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars and a ten thousand two hundred and sixty-dollar reoccurring annual fee. Four C one authorizes the execution of an agreement with the Metropolitan Council to participate in the 2022 Citizen Assisted Monitoring Program. Four C two authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars with S C H to perform a feasibility study for the downtown street lighting rehab project. That is S E H. Four C three approves a city code suspension allowing the contractor for the Mara Street, Hanson Avenue, and Thirteen Avenue Utility Extension Project to perform work from seven a.m. to five p.m. on Saturdays for the duration of the contract.
Thank you. Did you read four A one?
I did.
Huh?
I did.
You did.
Okay, that's one double check, thank you. A motion's been made and seconded for the modified consent agenda, it's been read into the public record, there would be no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead now to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda tonight. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda tonight. Mr. Reynolds, have we received any electronic communication?
No, sir.
Seeing none, then we would move ahead to business removed from consent agenda. And we had two items, and we would start with four A two, which is establishing a ballot board. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I saw this come up on the agenda, and I thought there might be concerns by people when, with the title, establish a ballot board. And I just want to talk a little bit about Shakopee election integrity and what this is about and exactly what we're looking at. So I'd like to ask our city clerk, Ms. Henson, if you can kind of just talk about our, how we're establishing, what's about this ballot board, establishing this ballot board, and talk a little bit about Shakopee's election integrity.
So Mayor and council, county is usually the one responsible for the absentee voting, whether it's mail or in person, but they also have the authority to hand some of those duties over to the municipalities. And so Scott County has handed over the absentee voting in-person process to the cities. They still handle the mail-in and the UKAVA, which is military or overseas mail-in process. So back in 2020, Prior Lake, Savage, and the city of Shakopee began to handle the absentee in-person voting. Our responsibility is to help early voting, voters to do the early voting, and it's an envelope process. So a voter comes in, fills out an application for their ballot, and they fill out envelopes, basically. They do the voting process, and we help them put their ballots in a secrecy envelope and put them in these envelopes, and then we keep them until a period prior to the election, about seven days prior to the election, where they can start to put them into the tabulator and be counted, okay? The ballot board is a ballot board, we have by statute a limited time to start accepting those. A voter can actually follow their ballot. From the time that they vote until it is actually put into the tabulator and counted, they can track it on the state program. So it's SVRS is the state's program. And so we, five days after we receive their ballot, a ballot board has to accept it or reject it. Because a person who votes in person or by mail, by absentee, if their ballot is rejected, they have an opportunity to correct that and vote again, you know, make whatever, excuse me, any corrections. That ballot board, all they're doing is making sure that the information they put on their application matches the information they put on their envelope. That's the only thing that ballot board is doing. They never once look at their ballot, they never open those envelopes, not until the seven days prior to the election, that we start to process those envelopes. So the ballot board are comprised of two people of differing parties. So we're making sure that that ballot is protected and those envelopes are protected from every moment that they are being handled. And they look at making sure that the name on the envelope matches the name on the application, the addresses match, and that the signatures, and that the witness has signed their name and address. That's what they're looking for. If all that information matches, it's accepted, and it's as simple as that. Then it goes into a locked area until they can be processed. That's all the ballot board does. And what we're going to be doing is that ballot board, we're going to have a couple of teams that will come on a specific day, that we will be putting a notice out in the paper of the days and times that we're going to have this ballot board. And people are able to come here at City Hall and watch the ballot board do this process. And, because we want transparency, we want people to feel comfortable that their ballot is being handled with integrity and that their ballot is being safe and taken care of. We don't want anybody to be afraid that they're not having their rights being taken care of in this voting process. I have to say that the voters here in Shakopee and in Scott County as a whole are a fabulous group of people. And we were talking earlier, Jay, you know, Counselor Whiting, about the fact that in 2020 was the first time that we started to experience here locally any question about the integrity about voting. And out of the twenty-two thousand registered voters in the city of Shakopee, I had, out of the forty-five hundred that came in to do absentee in person, two people questioned how their ballot was going to be taken care of. We don't have that level of fear or, you know, concern. Most people here in Shakopee and Scott County, we have a ninety percent turnout rate usually in our voting, our voters in Scott County. We have a high voter participation. We have a great group of people who are involved in the election process. And I'm not that concerned, but I want to educate them, I want them to understand that we are doing everything we can to make sure that their vote counts and that it's taken care of. And me and my staff, what we're going to be doing is providing videos coming down the road about educating them about the voting process, our equipment, how we're training our election judges, and all the different components about the election, so that they can be at ease about what we are doing, how their vote is being handled, and then they won't have to worry so much.
Well, thank you for that explanation. And as far as tabulator security, can you talk just a little bit about that, too?
Sure. So our tabulator, I know this is a horrible name in the news called Dominion, is the same company that we have for our equipment. However, our equipment is not connected to the internet at all, okay? Minnesota loves paper. You have a paper ballot, you will always have a paper ballot in the state of Minnesota. However, our tabulators have these little data cards that go into the machine, and there's two of them, so we have a lot of redundancy. And these cards, basically the machine takes a picture of your ballot, and it stores that image on these cards, okay? And it's never once during the day, from when the polls open to the polls close, on the internet. It's not connected at all to Wi-Fi throughout the entire day, all right? What it's doing is it's storing the information from those ballots on those cards. And then at the end of the day, once everybody, all the information is in, we have a modem that we connect, and it uses cellular information that connects for two minutes and transmits all that information on those cards to the county. That's it. And then, if there's an issue, we can take those two cards out of the machine and take them to the county, and they can use those cards to get the information, or we have boxes of paper ballots. So we have different ways to handle the information. So everybody can just relax that there's not any way during the day at any time, no one is messing with those images or those ballots or changing any of their votes.
Then one more follow-up, and when I was part of the canvassing board, I think you guys did it audit, you audited a ward or two.
We do that every year, every election.
A role of the day, you picked a ward, and you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
I'll be done with this.
Yeah, the canvassing board, the county does that every election, and so what they do is they put every precinct within Scott County into a hat. And Shakopee, now that we have more precincts, we have a higher risk of having our precincts picked. But what they do is they pick out three, I don't know if that's going to increase now that we have, Scott County went from forty-seven precincts to, I think, fifty-four. But there will be pulling out three or four precincts out of the hat, and they do a hand count. So they pull those precincts, and all the ballots from those precincts get hand counted. So then those cities, whichever precincts were polled, we, I would bring in election judges for my precincts, and they would spend the day hand counting that precinct each race. Now, it might not be every race, they would specifically choose certain races. And depending on how many people are in that race, it can be a very long process. But, and too with hand counting, this is something that most people don't take in consideration. And I was talking with Chelsea today about, just imagine, this is the benefit of having a tabulator versus hand counting. Say we have a race, and there are four people running for this one seat, and let's say only a hundred people voted, okay? This is how, if we have to do hand counting, go back to the old way of hand counting ballots, this is how we have to by state law count it. There are two people of differing parties, and we're going to count this race. And Joe is the first person that we're going to count the ballots. So Chelsea and I are of differing parties, and now we're going to count all the votes for Joe. And once we get done counting for Joe, we put all the ballots back together and start to count for Fred. And now we put them all back together, and we start to count them for Chris. So we don't just count the ballots once, we count them four times. And when you now look and think about how big that ballot was at the 2020 election, and how big it's going to be for the, just the primary or even the state election, especially with redistricting and all the offices that are up for reelection, the commissioner positions, all of that, the number is astronomical. And then you bring in human error, these tabulators are a godsend. Because human error, especially when you've sat in a polling location and worked fifteen, sixteen hours, and now you need to hand count twenty-five hundred ballots, because that's how many are in an average polling location for the city of Shakopee. That's a lot of ballots. So these machines are really important, and the equipment is very important. And so, yeah, it's an exciting time, and we're hoping that people will come and help. If you've never been an election judge, I'm going to put a plug in here.
There you go.
If you've never been an election judge, now's the time, we'd love to have you, if you're really curious and are concerned, this is the time. Come and participate and learn, we're willing to teach you and have you a part of the team. And if you have questions, you can always reach out and ask, and me and my staff will answer whatever questions, so.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of questions. So when you walk into a in-person polling center, you walk up and the first thing they ask is name, and they look in his book or in his laptop, and they find you, and then they make you sign, okay? So how in the mail-in process do they, are they verifying that the person doing this is actually eligible to vote in this area?
Okay, so for absentee in-person voting, we actually don't have poll pads, that's only used in the polling location on election day. What we have here in-person voting is we are connected to the state election program. It's called SVRS. And what happens is when you come in, you've filled out an application for an absentee in-person ballot. We take that information, you usually fill out on that application, you use either the last four digits of your social security number or your driver's license number. And so we put in your name, and we use that number, those numbers, and we can pull your name up on that voter registration program. If you are a registered voter and you voted in the last four years, your information's going to pop up. And so we know exactly what precinct you vote in, and we know what ballot to give you. If you do not pop up in that program by, and I'm serious, if you haven't voted, if you didn't vote in 2020, you will not be in the system. So if you haven't voted in every election, I guarantee you within the last four years, you will not be in the SVRS, and you will have to reregister. So that will be the time that we will hand you another piece of paper, you know, the state of Minnesota loves our paper. So you'll get another piece of paper, and it's an application. And then we'll need to see your physical driver's license that will prove, or there are other forms and ways, and that's a long list that we, we're not going to go into tonight.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, next question, Mayor, the, we have election judges, and we have poll monitors at the in-person process. So I think I heard you earlier say you're inviting the public in to watch this process.
Yes.
So that would be the equivalent of the poll monitors at the in-person location?
These are people that, they're not poll monitors, it's just average, everyday people that can come in and observe the process. They can come in, let's say that we use the chambers during the ballot board process. They're going to be able to sit in these chairs while the ballot board is sitting at a table. They're not going to be able to be like up in the space and handling anything. They can just sit there and watch that these two judges of differing parties are doing their job, and that the ballots aren't going outside of the space that they're supposed to, and no one is opening the ballots, no one's touching the, you know what I mean? That's what that process is going to be for.
Okay, I think that's the only two questions that I had.
So I had a question, actually related to Counselor Lehman's question. So if I come in for absentee and I'm not registered, you're going to give me paperwork to register, can I fill that out on the spot and then get my absentee ballot?
Yes, you may. You can vote right away.
Right. Okay, um, yeah.
I actually was right behind somebody that was from a different city at my polling location, and they were telling the, they were trying to sign in to vote, and the person was saying, but you're in the wrong place, and they're like, but I'm here now, and it's convenient, and they're like, sorry, you're in the wrong town.
Yes, yes.
So sometimes, you know, they make it really convenient, or government's trying to make it convenient for everybody to participate. But there are some rules where you have to actually be in the right location, city, I guess.
Yeah, Mayor and council, we have, the city of Shakopee, in 2020, when we started to do absentee in-person voting, one thing that we did find is that Louisville and Jackson Township residents were coming to City Hall a lot. And so what we have done is we have told basically Scott County that we're willing to have those two townships come here to vote in person. It just made sense. They're part of our community, they're, you know, townships, and they come here, they don't think of being separate. So I just said, it just makes sense, they automatically come here. Anyways, it's foolish to say, no, you have to drive down Marshia Road to go to the county office to vote absentee in person. And that number is so small, it just made sense, and good customer service to our community to have them vote here. So we do that, most of the time the county handles all the townships in-person voting. So we're doing that this year, which is a little bit different than other cities, but I just thought it was a better way to handle things, so.
Well, great, Counselor Contreras?
Really quick, so you talked about when you receive the envelope, and it has a witness and an address. What happens when you accept it? What happens when you don't have that witness, signature, and address? What happens to those?
So then, when they get rejected, what we do is we reach out to the voter. And we let them know that, hey, your ballot was rejected, and we send them the information, we give them another ballot, we give them a new envelope set up, and we say, hey, your previous ballot was rejected, here's the new information, please, this is what needs to be corrected, or what you missed on the last one, please make sure that when you send this one back, it's done correctly, so that they still have an opportunity to vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great information, Counselor Brennan?
I have a question. If I, if I vote early or vote absentee, can I go into the polling place and vote again? And how would you know if I did that?
Okay, good question, Mayor and council. So what happens is, what we do is when we receive your ballot or your envelopes and accept it, it's marked in the SVRS program. So what happens is on election day, if you happen to decide to go into the polling location and try to vote, and they look up your name, a nice big red A is by your name that says you've already voted absentee. So there is no way that you would be able to vote. Even if you went back to another location, if you, even at Scott County, if you went into Scott County and tried to vote again before the election, they would already know that you voted at City Hall. So immediately it's marked that you have voted. Once we receive, once the ballot board accepts your ballot, it's in the program, and we know.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Great discussion. We can always learn something about the integrity and get educated about our process. I served as an election judge a long time ago, there was a guy named Hang and Chad that ran for a public office, and I, after that, I said I need to know more and be educated and wanted to be involved and learn about the process. I did it many times, I found the process intriguing, educational, and actually made my level of security and integrity go way up here in Scott County and so, but I encourage anybody that wants to learn and help the community and be part of the process, a great opportunity to be an election judge. Contact City Hall or City Clerk and step up, lean in, it's a great thing. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last comment, Minnesota, I think, was the highest voter turnout in the country, but there are forces out there that are trying to chip away at election integrity, and I know Minnesota will be one that will manage that and fight back, but there'll be other states and other laws that are put in place to try and suppress voting. And so I know it won't happen here, though, so thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution R 2022-080, authorizing the city clerk to establish ballot boards for the responsibility to accept or reject ballots for absentee voters.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras, further discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, that motion passes, thank you. Great discussion. Let's move ahead then to our other item pulled off, consent, four B one, Emblem Shakopee Final Plant.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, my question will be for planning staff. The page number twenty-six, our page twenty-six in the document, it's memorandum from Mr. Noble, senior planner, Mark Noble from MICA Heckman. The second, first sentence in the second paragraph says, this review should be considered preliminary, but yet this is- But yet this is a final plat, so. I realize that was dated May thirty-first, uh, a week ago. So from the staff's perspective, it's preliminary, but here's before us is being final.
It's final when we say it's final.
Pardon me?
Isn't it final once we say it's final or?
Well, I, I'm saying from staff's perspective, they're telling us this review should be considered preliminary. But in reality, this review is final.
Mr. Lillyhog can help. Uh, Mayor and Council members, um, MICA works out of Public Works and, um, that language is used in general because we go through, um, as far as the final plat goes, uh, there are still a lot of details that we work out after it goes through the city council body, um, with the specifics of design pertaining to storm sewer, um, design criteria for roadways and et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so as far as, uh, as those conditions go, there, um, there are specific ones that are final that, uh, Mr. Noble has incorporated into the resolution for conditions of approval. Um, but beyond that, there, there are details that, uh, we'll continue to work on with them through the final plan approval before they build the project.
Other, uh, questions on the, on this final plat? I guess I had a question that went out to Council from my, from the agenda questions and just the access. So we're getting a, a full right in, right out, or full access on Street G? And then it'll be right in, right out only off of Philip Way, is that correct?
Uh, Mayor and Council members, that is correct.
Okay. Other questions?
So in the future, we're gonna have a full access when the next property comes on?
Mayor and Council, no, that'll be a full access.
Full right away?
Right away.
Off of Seventeenth.
That was set up when, uh, Mayor and Council, when Seventeenth Avenue was built, that was the full access point for, for both this side of the street and for the gravel pit side.
Where's the right in, right out only?
The next street on this diagram you can see here, um.
This one right here.
Right there.
They're in the process of making changes to that with Scott County to make that a right in, right out.
Is it because it's too close to Seventeenth Avenue to have a full access?
Mayor and Council members, based on the county's spacing guidelines for their county road, um, yes, it's, um, it's, it's too close and they plan on, uh, closing that median off, uh, meaning they're gonna continue the median through and remove that left turn lane and, and build that so you cannot, um, turn there other than a right in and right out only. So that's been, um, planned. I would say that was incorporated when, uh, Seventeenth Avenue became County Road Sixteen, when it was transferred jurisdiction to the county. Um, the county implemented their spacing guidelines, so that's been set in place for quite a while.
Mayor.
And this one, I think these were discussed at preliminary plat.
Yeah, Ma- Mayor, just thirty thousand feet, but here we are looking forward, which always happens is down the road, that road will be turned over to the city again. First, it's ours, then we turn it over to the county, then the county turns it back to us and then we're gonna say, gee, we should, we could've had a full access there. And it seems like, you know. Try not to berate government because I'm part of it.
Yep. Other questions on the plat? The turnbacks are great, aren't they? Um, other questions about the plat? Seeing none, Counselor?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution, R. twenty twenty-two dash zero seven nine, a resolution approving the final plat of Emblem Shakopee.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting for the Emblem Shakopee Final Plat. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, a motion passes, thank you very much. That concludes our items that were removed from consent. Now I would entertain a motion to recess to our EDA meeting.
I can make that motion?
Counselor Whiting.
If you want.
And second by Counselor Lehman. And, uh, all, uh, further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We are, Madam Chair, the President, Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting of June seventh. Um, can I get a roll call, please, or if you can just note who's here, that'd be great. Um, item number two is the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes? Uh, Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Send a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. Motion passes, uh, five to zero. Next on the agenda is the consent business, which is the EDA minutes of, uh, uh, May third.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, EDA minutes.
Second.
Consent business, sorry.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the EDA minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those against? Motion passes, five to zero. Next on the, um, agenda is reports and that is the EDA bill list. Ms. Lehman?
Madam Chair, I've always brought this up over the years, nothing special, but the Kennedy and Graven charged, EDA attorney charges. If you notice in the project, we've got gravel pit for something else and entrepreneurial event and it, it has, tells us what specifically they're, these are for. It would be nice if we could put something in that project column so we can link that to something.
Can we, is that a possibility, um, Mr. Reynolds?
I don't, don't need to write this minute, but I'd like to be consistent in my ask.
Mr. President, um, so you're saying the actual Kennedy and Graven bill does not have a code or?
It does not, it just says, uh, what is it, a thousand thirty dollars, Kennedy and Graven, EDA.
It's not a list of a project.
It's not connected to a project.
So, uh, Madam President and Board members, so often we get EDA bills from them that are just general EDA. They're not connected to a project. So if they're reviewing something that's not a project related, there's a question, they just bill it general EDA.
All right.
We, we definitely will have any specific project targeted for that because then it, then can be recouped, uh, possibly. And so it has to be tracked.
So this is general.
I do my best.
General EDA oversight is what this one is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions regarding the bill list?
I can a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to adjourn to July fifth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P. M.
And a motion and a second by Contreras. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes, um, we stand adjourned.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for June seventh, two thousand twenty-two. We're just coming out of our EDA meeting and reconvene. And we would move to item number nine A, which is, uh, Dick's sanitation update. And Chelsea will present, start the presentation.
Well, uh, well, uh, Ms. Peterson is, is doing that, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, this is a workshop. Uh, feel free to interrupt, feel free to ask questions, feel free to, uh, have discussions. Uh, it is less formal, it's designed that way, it's supposed to be, uh, collaborative. Uh, and the bottom line is, is that, uh, you know, we're, we have these individuals here to be able to talk about some of the issues that we've had with Dick's sanitation and, you know, hopefully at the end of the day, we'll be able to have some clarity on where we are overall with the process. Ms. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, Mayor and Council. Um, guys, you can come right up if you'd like. Um, I put together a memo for you all highlighting, uh, a few of the more recent and more significant issues we've been having with Dick's. Um, and we have several representatives from DSI to, um, address these and other questions that Council may have. A couple of those high, excuse me, issues were transitional data. We struggle with this every time we transition. They'll discuss their ongoing audit efforts and, and, uh, rate sizing and making sure that people are signed up for the appropriate services that they desire. Um, billing, there were some incorrect notices sent to about nine hundred residents, excuse me, um, and they'll discuss that a little bit more. And then, uh, customer service tools, both what's in place and then a little bit of a preview to, um, address some of the issues that have been going on. So, um, I would stand for any questions from you immediately, otherwise our representatives have presentation.
Well, good, uh, thank you. Welcome and good evening. Uh, we appreciate you being here in front of us as representatives for Dick's sanitation. You just started a new contract in January, congratulations. And I will ask that during your presentation, if you can speak loudly into the mic and, and, and share when you need to. Welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Jeff Weist with Dick's Sanitation. With me today is Mike Robinson. We're here today to address and discuss the issues that have happened. Um, I think realistically in the big picture, we've provided service the entire time. We've done a pretty good job, but there's been a couple of issues that we definitely can overcome here. Um, Mike will kind of touch base on a couple of the billing issues. Mike works in the finance department and I think we'll start there and kind of move forward, if that works for you.
Of course, yeah. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us and, uh, and giving us the chance to address some concerns and what we have in place to make sure they don't happen again. Um, and as, uh, Jeff mentioned, I'm gonna address the billing issue first. Um, we came to my attention, we, uh, sent mailings out on, uh, December thirty-first and then, uh, February, uh, twenty-eighth. And after the last mailing, we, um, sent some communications out in regards to past due accounts. Um, from the communication I received from Trina at our office, that she received from the city and customers, um, some customers had not received their invoices, but were receiving late notifications. Um, one of the things we did at transition time, we, uh, had a module that we were working outside of our system to try to collect enough information so we can set up emails, phone numbers. It ended up being manual, still got brought into our system, but there were some, you know, when we went out there, there was no vetting. We weren't able to confirm addresses, we had incorrect spellings and something that we saw, we, we did the best we could to fix it. Um, so what are we going to do going forward? So our last billing just went out on five thirty-one. So what we did is prior to that billing, we verified the email addresses in our system, that they were set up with an email address and the box to actually do the emails was checked. Um, we then looked at everybody else. They should all have received a invoice through the postal service. So after we ran the report, uh, ran our bills on five thirty-one, we did an audit. And in that audit, we saw that nineteen hundred and twenty-one customers received a successful email billing message that we got back from our system. We then confirmed that sixty-nine hundred and eighty-five customers, including the HOA sites, um, received a USPS invoice. Forty-seven customers did not receive an invoice and they had either a zero account balance or credit on their account. So the system worked. So we will use this audit process going forward each time we do billing to make sure that we don't have any issues. And everybody who, um, is in the city of Shakopee does get an invoice electronically or through the mail. So I hope that, um, alleviates some worries or issues, but if you have any questions on that portion of it.
Uh, so you're, you bill quarterly, right?
We bill quarterly.
I just got my bill in very early July and we all paid forward, right?
Right.
So this is from, this bill is for Ju- July first.
Correct.
Through the end of, uh, September, correct?
Correct.
Yep, um, and I did get it about thirty days earlier. But I know that some folks said they, they didn't get it or have never gotten a bill.
Correct.
Um, and I don't know what the issue is there. And, um, and I did get your bill back in January, obviously, when it first started, so. Counselor Lehman?
All right, let me see how much light I can shed on this from my personal experience. Now, obviously, we all here represent all the residents and businesses of Shakopee. I can't speak directly to their situation be, unless I know personally of it, but I'm gonna speak directly about my very own and my mother's, which I manage with her. So originally, when this transition happened, there was emails sent out and them emails were not sent out to say, do you wanna sign up for email invoices? They were sent out to verify the customer's information because I filled out my mother's email that she received. I don't recall doing my own because both my mother and I receive our own mailed bills, okay? Well, neither one of us got a bill. We got the phone call left on the answering machine saying, you're past due. Like, how can we, how can we pass due, I never got a bill? So I tried contacting you folks, which, uh, I've got some pretty nice pictures on my phone of thirty-five minute hold times, which I gave up on. I went to both the city's website and clicked on the Shakopee connection for Dick's. I went to Dick's website. There was really no communication from you folks saying, hey, look, we've got a, we've got a glitch happening. We recognize it. Everybody relax, we're on top of it, you know, we're gonna take care of it, blah, blah, blah. That wasn't there, so that was very disappointing from my perspective, trying to figure out why this is happening and how do I rectify it? And there's no alternative for me to rectify it, can't contact anybody, don't have a bill to pay. Uh, I'd have mailed you a check if I knew what the amount was. Um, very disappointing from that aspect and, and it wasn't just me, obviously. You saw the social media blowing up from a lot of different folks having a lot of different problems. So I finally managed to send an email under contacts at the Dick's sanitation. Clicked on the basic email, I think it said info at Dick's sanitation. And I, the gal on the other end, um, I should probably get her name for you and I will do that privately. She did a great job straightening stuff out. She kept sending me these email invoices and I'm like, wait a minute, that's great, I still want one coming in the mail. I will pay these, I'll print them out and pay these, they're legitimate and I, and I do owe that. But I want an invoice where I tear off the bottom and I keep a copy and I write check number, paid this date and I put it in my file. So if there's a glitch and somebody says we never got paid, I say, check number here, bank posted, you got your money. It's on your end. So I've hopefully, I'm praying that that's straightened out. I'm told today by email that, yep, I'm gonna get a, a paper invoice like I have been from the beginning on both accounts and we can go back to normal. So if you can make that happen, that'd be wonderful.
I'm just laughing because I s- I sent emails out because I saw yours, because I'm auditing and I saw, and I said, uh,
Now, now.
I said, Matt Lehman is now not receiving an electronic email, is this correct? Because yours will be mailed to you through the mail. They made a correction on your account, I saw that because I was questioning it.
Well, if you would've looked back in history, you would've saw that we never received email invoices to begin with.
I think that's one of the reasons we're here to talk about.
Yeah.
And I think there's some things here that we're gonna talk about.
Yep.
That will address some of your concerns and your concerns are valid.
Absolutely, they are.
And that's why we wanna address, counsel here, and explain what occurred, why we think we're in a better position.
Yep, yep.
Certainly, we don't wanna be in this position either, right?
Right, and, and, and I wanna, you know, I wanna stress that this, I've never had a problem with your service at either accounts. You know, whether it's pickup times, locations or anything like that, no problem with the service. Just this one billing snap was the only thing I've ever had. But I just wanted to share personally how that experience was so that you know what it is. And it, it's probably different for other folks, I don't know, can't speak for them personally. But now let's talk about how we're gonna fix this and I'm gonna get mailed invoices on both counts, right?
You're getting mailed invoices, actually, I just saw yours, just your, your home account. So if there's another one, um, if the person you talked to, uh, you talked to her about both of those things, she got it straightened out. Because I questioned her on it, why?
I was so wanting to get you on record to say, yes, both accounts will get mailed bills again.
I looked at yours, I know yours will be, for sure.
And I think that's one of the things we're talking about.
And, and never did I mention that I was a council member and no one had. I had no preferential treatment, I'm just dealing with my own personal guarantees and my mother's.
You didn't give them the, don't you know who I am?
No. I'm, I'm a nobody.
Hey, this problem's been going on for a couple of weeks. Do you, do you think that we're, that you're in a better place today than you were three weeks ago?
So can we touch base on that a little bit?
Yep, you can switch the mic though.
On the billing?
Yes.
I'll say yes, because we did an audit.
Yep.
Now, what I, what I wanna make sure I, I say clearly, email addresses that came in either through the, um, the mailer or we had that jot form where you can go out online and put that in. or we had that jot form where you can go out online and put that in. If that email came in and that was filled out, you're going to get an emailed invoice. If there's nothing on your file, you'll get it through the postal service. Or if you called in and say, "Hey, I want to change it." So everybody will get an invoice, whether electronically or through the mail, from the 5/31 mailing. So was yours mailed or emailed?
Mine was mailed.
So then they all went out. Okay. And all the emails were completed.
Maybe I'd have to double-check that. Maybe I, maybe I get it as electronic, and then I print it out, and then I tear it off, and then write paid on it.
Right, right.
You know, America's trying to be more efficient, more effective. Invoices by the mail, everybody's doing it. There is an opt-out. Go back to old-school paper. You know, I've slowly learned to adapt because I can push print and get that, and now I have that printed copy. And now I can write scribble notes and smiley faces or a garbage can or...
Well, real concerns, and that was when this was going on, people were trying to get ahold of you.
Right.
Couldn't get ahold of you.
And that's why I want to address right now.
And there was no communication, as Counselor Lehman said, "Hey, we recognize we have an issue. We want to make sure that you understand that we've got this under control. We will have this game planned. This is what we're going to do. Take care of it." No, instead, alls we have is silence, and then, you know, every 15 minutes, we've got a new Facebook post about, "Nobody can get through to Dick's." When we were talking about the contract a couple of years ago, this was a very important piece for me.
Yep.
And I specifically talked about customer service, and I specifically talked in those discussions about needing to have someone that was dedicated to the city of Shakopee to ensure that we didn't have customer service issues. And you assured me that someone would be dedicated to the city of Shakopee. They could call. That person would be there. They know the community. They know the contract, which were all issues that we had in the prior, with the prior carrier. And I had nothing but silence.
So Bill, those things are in place. We do have an expert on the contract. But if we can touch base about the phone system?
Okay. I'll, I'll touch base on the phone system and what's happening. So what I went back to, I went back to November. So as far as our staffing goes, we have 12 customer service representatives who are all qualified to answer phone calls on invoices, service issues. And then we do have a dedicated Shakopee lead manager, and that's Trina, who most of you have probably dealt with. So when we look back to November and December, the average call volume and the average time of a customer interaction on the phone with our customer service reps, we could probably handle 600 calls a day coming into our office. In November and December, the average was about 375 calls a day, more than fully staffed to answer those phone calls. Every January, we know we're going to have a spike in our phone calls because it's Christmas tree time. This year, at the same time, we took on two new municipal contracts. And then we saw our calls go up to about 12,260 calls for January. And we also saw the interaction time, because everything's new, to talking to the customers also expand. At that point, we could handle probably about 500 calls a day. February went back to normal. February was just a normal month, not much going on. Then in March and April of this year, Dakota County ordinance 110 came into play. And what that is, Dakota County requires us to go to weekly recycling. So all of our customers in Dakota County's service changed, and their invoices changed. So we went up to, in March, in April, to 12,000 calls, and March, 15,005 in April. And then the length of those phone calls went from two to three minutes to seven, which now lowered to our ability to answer about 425 calls in a day. In May, our trunk lines actually went down because the volume was so high. You can only handle so much coming through the fiber lines. We are seeing for June, it should be much better. We should start getting back to a normal. Everybody in Dakota County has either gotten a new invoice, got their notification, and they're all on their weekly recycling. So we should see a drop in, back to normalcy, where we will be fully staffed. The best we could do, of course, was put something on our website, letting everybody know that the call volume is higher than we've ever seen. And it's been tough for us to answer those phone calls because we physically cannot do it. We do have the emails in place for contact. And if you could share with me the experiences you've heard on email, I'd like to see that so I can address that. But the phones, as I mentioned, we do have enough people to pick up the regular call volume coming in, and we do expect normalcy now at this time. Because we, this was the last billing cycle, and it was only about 1,000 people who were affected, so.
Since, since we're in a kind of laid-back workshop-type session here, let me point out how important it would be to just put that information out ahead of time. You would reduce your call load. So you actually have the ability to reduce your call load just by putting the information out early. If you would have put the information out in Shakopee early, not only on your site, but the site that's linked on Shakopee's website, most people, including myself, would have went, "Hey, the problem's on their end. I'm just going to wait until they straighten it out. And when they bill me next month and it has a late charge on it, then I'm going to come after them and scream at them because it's their fault, not mine." And you would have reduced the call load substantially, and the problem would have been solved.
Appreciate that. Just one thought. So you make a good point. We put it on our website. Whatever we had on the website, we could have duplicated just on the link on the Shakopee site.
Yeah, your contract has a requirement to have a link on Shakopee's website.
Right.
And, which is there. So that information that you put on your site could have been linked right to our Dick's sanitation on the city's website. And there would have been two avenues for people to gather the information and not make the call to you.
Sure.
Right? Same would apply with the changes in Dakota County. You know, you could have put that information out there in detail, maybe flashing for Dakota County if there's major changes or something. Then the Dakota County residents would see it and not, not call you as much, and lift any burden on your call center. So to me, it seems like it's a communication upfront issue. I don't mean that as a shot.
No, no, we appreciate it.
I'm just being honest about my own personal experience and how this would help you and the citizens at large. Because like I said, if I would have read somewhere online that they've got a technical issue on their end, "Don't worry about it. They're straightening it out," I'd have just ignored it.
And I think that's, that's generally my overall concern, is that everything was reactive, and there was nothing that was proactive. And the city is a partner, but if the city can't get ahold of you either, you know, and people are yelling at me, and I've got nothing to offer because I have no idea what's going on, then I'm not much of a partner for you.
Well noted, yes.
Well, you don't, you guys are certainly in the garbage business and sanitation and waste, and people are very passionate about it. Doesn't matter if they're in Shakopee or Lakeville. Full disclosure, my wife works for the city of Minneapolis, Solid Waste and Recycling Department. They are very passionate. But I think over the years, outreach and communication outward and timely helps everybody, right? More education, more information that can try to diffuse some of these issues and, and actually help, help your company along here. I mean, I look at it that we're six months into a five-year agreement here, right? I think that, to me, the transition, off the bat, went pretty smooth from what I know. But here we are in June, and then there's a billing snafu, and we got five years. Let's get this right and go there. But more comments, more billing questions? Otherwise, we can move back over.
I, I don't have a billing question necessarily, but I got my statement today. And in that statement was a notice that effective April 22nd, the, I had to handle my account and my account numbers differently if I was, yeah. And unfortunately, I don't have it with me. But, and, but it was effective April 22nd, which is, you know, over a month and a half.
Right, we changed on the-
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
On your mail, we're in transition with our mailing company and our email. So they're two separate entities right now. They will be merged November 1st. So if you get one in the mail, there's just, let's just say your account was 1234. Now in front would be a 34601234. So that's the change, the only change on it. And we have a district number now.
So is that, does that affect any of the slowdown that, that you're seeing?
Oh, no, no. It's just when you do a submittal, if you're making a payment online, if you want to come in, you have to put the invoice number and your account number. That's all that is. So it's just a different look to the top of the invoice.
Okay.
So it's a different watermark. So a couple of things look a little different. It started on April 1st for us, so we included that in, because you didn't, the quarterly people didn't get invoiced in April 1st. It's a stuffer, just to let you know.
Okay.
More? Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, actually, I just was gonna, not me personally. I got my bill today, actually, and that was part of my notice. I did get that. But there was something on social media, but I was waiting to see if you, we haven't let you speak because you had a lot more to say about different things we were going to touch. But on social media that we're talking about, and someone posted their, their bill and talking about as of March 1st, there's a $20 contamination fee if the driver sees anything in your recycle that shouldn't be there. So I'd like to talk about that.
You want me? Okay. I'll, I'll address that.
Well, you're, okay.
Mayor Cooper on us. What we did, Jeff and I are both members of the Rec Committee in the state on trying to make recycling better. And one of the things we're looking at is, we still get a lot of contamination in the recycling because there are a lot of people who still remember the old ways. I put my recycling in a plastic bag. I take that, I throw it in the recycling. We can't do that anymore. So what we did is, we implemented a contamination fee. And the whole idea behind this was to get a call from the customer. We will waive the charges and then explain to them what the proper way to recycle is.
But that's not covered in the contract. There's no contamination fee in the contract.
No, the, the, correct. There's not.
So how are you instituting a fee upon the residents of Shakopee for something that's not in the contract?
We are going to roll all that back. We are still going to have a contamination notification to try to get the customers to call. Unfortunately, not the city of Shakopee in general, not city of Shakopee, but in general in recycling. We have been trying for 10, 12 years to get recycling cleaner.
Right.
And it just doesn't happen. When it comes into a recycling facility, it's too late.
Right.
So the onus we're trying to pass on is to the generator, to try to get them to stop to realize it. Is there a better way to do it? Well, one, yeah, in Shakopee, we shouldn't have done that. It was an oversight because we got all together as a group and said, "Hey, we're going to put this contamination charge in. We're going to clean it up."
Well, not just that, but let us know so we can at least work on it so our recycling is clean. Again, one more time, the lack of communication. And then in addition, the trash must fit in the can with the lid completely closed, or you have an extra charge of 350 to 7. And I've heard people have, you know, with the winds, minor branches, things, obviously, you're not going to put the tree in there, but you know, minor things that make your lid open. So, I mean, these are small things. I understand the ones that are overly full and you can't even pick up because they're all falling off. I understand that. But like if you have a broken mop or a broom and you put it, how do you? Yeah, so, and, and the thing again is, where did we post all this so our constituents would know? And if, I mean, we could break them or do whatever to make it fit and it close, but we need to know we're going to hit, get hit with all these fees.
And, and, and this was also another fee that we talked a lot about in our contract negotiations. And you and I both came to the agreement, we're going to have common sense prevail. And that if you've got, you know, because if you remember in our discussions, I told you, I said, "You know, five times out of six, I don't have my, my thing full. There's going to be one time that it's full, and, and there may be one bag that's over the top." And I, and I specifically said, "Well, if we're going to do this, then I want to be credited for the, the..." And then that's when we both said, "You know, we just need to have common sense about this."
Yes.
And, and, and so, you know, the idea that if, if a lid is up like this, suddenly that the, the residents are going to be charged, you know, that's...
Our intent is not to be critical or if the lid's open a little bit, to charge extras. That's not the intent. In fact, when we get back, we're going to look at what that is. Because I can tell you, our operations team is not requested by their managers to charge for this. So we're going to identify what this is and who it is. We've got, you've got some great drivers out here that are very passionate about what they do and their long time. They're great employees. But we'll look into this because that's no direction from anybody from us. So I'd like to know, is it a, is it five people? Is it 10 people? Is it 10 residents, or is it 1,000? That's the thing we have to identify.
Or if it's a, you know, a situation where you have a container and it's full, and then there's extra bags, week in and week out, week in. You know, I kind of get that that would be an extra charge. You either need another cart, you know?
Bigger cart.
Huh?
Bigger cart.
A bigger cart, you know, because that doesn't do anybody any good. I, I get that. But a once, once-in-a-blue-moon situation?
I, I can tell you, in our 56th year of business, that's not how we've done things. That's not how we've grown. We've never been a nickel-and-dime charge. We had this discussion. It's not our thing. So we are going to investigate this, and we'll get back with you on that.
I want to defend you just a little bit because when, when I drive around and see some of these carts that have two bags above the top of the cart.
Yeah, be charged for that.
You know, and from my perspective, I'm not only looking at it as, you know, they're paying for this much to get disposed of, and they're getting this much disposed of at the price of this much. So they're getting a better deal than I am. But I'm looking at it from a different standpoint to where, okay, this is our community. It's just blowing all over the place, into somebody else's yard, down the streets, into the sewer drains, storm sewer drains and everything else. So it doesn't serve our interest. It doesn't serve your interest. And it's not the right way it should be done by the resident. So, you know, I, I'm not looking at this totally as a blanket, as there are problem situations that, realistically. And, and maybe again, we're back to the communication piece where you simply pick it up, and you put the thing back down, and the driver gets out, and I know they don't want to do that. And they put this nice little note on there that says, you know, "Please, in the future, make sure the lid is somewhat close to being closed. That is the policy. If you'd like a bigger container, please contact us at this number."
Counselor Brennan?
So you've known, we've told you about these fees that have been charged, and you've said you're going to go back and take a look at it. And in that review, are you going to look at those bills and re-credit those individuals for those? You know, we have delinquencies now. We have these overcharges for recycling and for overfilled cans or carts. So we need to make sure that those fees and any other possibilities are credited back to those individuals.
Yes, we'll review those, yes.
And I think really, it would be really beneficial for you and, and really for any of us that get the phone calls to have it, have it done quickly because it will just perpetuate.
So I didn't get a chance, oh, go ahead.
I'll be on that.
I mean, it's not going to be weeks. I already have our software provider give them a heads-up today. But I'll be talking to them tomorrow morning, see how we can get that reversed.
I didn't get a chance to complain on social media yet, but I, because I knew you guys were coming. I could do it right to your face. So where I live, we have the alley pickup. And certain times of the year, we put it out on the street because of road closures. So on Monday, yesterday, when they came to pick up, how was I to know that you guys switched back to alley? I noticed my neighbors had all known, but how didn't, how, how come I didn't know?
We had sent notifications to everybody that was in that. Road restrictions, this isn't new, but we did get notifications.
So I have to watch the road restriction?
We notified every cart that had alley pickup.
Through email or through the paper little?
On that little cart, paper tag on the cart.
Well, I didn't get that.
Okay. Well, we apologize for that, but that was one of our plans.
Several of my neighbors also didn't get that. So unless you're out monitoring, "Where's Joe putting his trash can this week?" And this has happened with your past competitors, too. So what they did is they just went around and collected them in the alleys and on the streets. So that's kind of defeating our purpose of having a one, one hauler so that they could just do the alley and be done, running back and forth and doing circles. I know you're going to do some of that as it is, but...
And do you mind if I ask, that was this week?
This was yesterday.
Yesterday.
Third Avenue. So just some of those communication things. We've been talking about that a lot tonight. And maybe that's something you guys maybe need to work on and talk to.
Well noted. I mean, we, we've definitely had discussions with staff, and we did know- Well noted, I mean, we, we've definitely had discussions with staff, and we did notify, I mean, road restrictions have been off for a couple of weeks.
But the road, state road restrictions don't apply to the city alleys, the city owns them alleys.
Well, for the most part, right. Because I know there's still a couple of alleys that we service even when road restrictions are on, but for the most part, I think ninety percent of the road restrictions, we're not using alleys during that time, right?
Yeah, I, I know, I'm on an alley also, and I think I got my notice through the city, the city website or the city Facebook page that... But I didn't get it from Dick's, so I moved all my trash cans back through.
Must have caught that one.
I believe alley restrictions going on, you guys had sent notifications, mailed notifications to the homeowners, I believe, because we had a little bit more lead time, and then when road restrictions come off, there's typically less lead time. So that's when they were papered on the cans physically, and we did our best to share it on both our website and social media as well. But we can certainly improve on that next year.
But I, I do want to touch base on one thing. One of the things, Bill, as you remember when we talked about communication, and we hit a lot here, right? And I want to leave this, if I can share with council members. Dick Sanitation has an app. Right now, there's about ten percent of the residents in the city of Shakopee on this app. The more people we can get on this app, the easier it is to communicate proactively versus reactively, because we can send out notifications timely regarding to what the situation happens to be. So whether it's alleys, road restrictions, other items that might occur, we can geocode that area and send it out to those specific people. Or, for instance, there's a weather alert, and we have to pull all trucks off the road because of weather. We can do a blanket notification to all residents that, hey, we can't service today because of weather, leave your container out tomorrow, right? So we want to be proactive, so the, the more we can, we're gonna ask the city, the more we can advertise this, get people on our app, the better it's gonna help all of us.
That's great, yeah, maybe we can...
If I roll, if I sign up to this app, will it automatically roll me over to email invoices? I'm just a little eerie, gotta admit it, you know?
That's the exact question my wife had. Why, you know, we, it's not for, we don't get the invoices, but how many times are they gonna notify me? I don't want to get this every time, you know, I'm not, it has nothing to do with me. So honestly, I'm on the app, well, because it tells me when my recycling was, when it was every other week, my trash, when yard waste, where season started, if there was a truck down that we had to wait for. And it's only, those are only once a week, so it's occurring, you'll get it the night before. Hey, tomorrow is trash day, tomorrow's recycling day.
So now I have another question. If a person had this app and they had multiple parcels that they were managing, can they do that, or do they have to get the app multiple times? So let's say I'm managing a house on that end of town and a house over here.
That's a good question, I will find out. That's a good question.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, because you type in, how, how it works, you type in the address. So you, you type in the address, it pops up, and then it says you want to sign up for it. Email, you know, so it knows who to send to you, it's an email or a text, you can choose how you want to receive the message.
Right, but will it let you do two different properties?
I don't know, I think it might just be specific to an address, but it can share the same email and phone number.
Okay.
This is great technology, and I know Corporate USA, I work for Target, you have an account, they want you to do e-statement, so they can... You can sign up for alerts, I have access twenty-four seven, take care of business, alerts, notifications, it's great, it does default you to email. But then, it says right there, you're gonna be defaulted if you want to switch back. Once you're in the system, just go back and delivery method and change back to paper. Companies are doing this for efficiencies, and it would be great if we could increase that user rate for your app.
Mayor and Council, I just want to address a couple of things on there. The most important thing besides the notifications, there's a Waste Wizard on this app. So if you're wondering what to do with a certain type of material, you can type that material in there, and it will tell you, hey, it's recyclable, or it's trash, or other, right? And, and maybe it's a battery that it's gotta go to the Scott County Waste Recycling Facility. A hazard, household hazardous waste facility, so there's some things there, but also, there's a game on there. It's an education game, meant to understand and, and promote where things should go, right? So we're all experts, we can go into Google, right? But the problem is, what's changed in the last few years between China Sword and some other things, things that we've known maybe five, six, seven years ago, aren't the same as they are today, right? So again, it's another tool to help educate.
Go ahead.
No.
We'll definitely have our communications team push this out, because this is exactly the kind of stuff that we want in, in everybody's hands, I mean, I never, I'm gonna sign up for it later.
Thank you, thank you.
So I want to address the recycling thing, so, you know, you guys are, there's a lot of competition in this industry. We took a tour at Demcon, I'm not sure if you use them, and they're kind of the end user, and they talk about it. You know, I had a, someone write to me in regard to plastic bags, they target plastic bags and I throw them in the recycling bin. That's one of the worst things you can do for the end user on the stream, because it bundles up the machinery, they gotta stop, cut it out. So, and clean stream is better for you, and the end stream actually ends up being better for Shakopee. And finding out what's recyclable and isn't, so we don't have a contamination thing. I know years ago, when you had this contract, you had a great little list of what was, the can and cannot. The old saying, if you're, yeah, if you're really unsure, throw it away, but I had, I live in a household that solid waste and recycling, because, you know, and it has to pass, so, but I took some black material, black two or black five to Demcon, and there's only a couple blacks that they take, right? And it's two or five, and so I had my piece when I was there, but just like that. Link, and maybe have it on the app, maybe have it on the, or put it on the link on, on the city, anything to educate people on the recycling, because that's real important, and I, I do see folks, I see it all the time, big plastic bags in the recycling. Actually, unfortunately, in today's world, I see black plastic bag lawn in the yard waste, which is a, the same problem in a different field. You know, you're supposed to use the leaf bags, or don't even bag it at all. So the more the consumer or residents can learn and, and understand, and I think better for the city, better for you guys.
Thank you.
One of the, I want to help the future here, since we're partners, right? But a lot of the questions I get in comments that I see are, are people that are, you know, I put a, I put a tree out in front of my house, and it hasn't been picked up for three weeks, and it's still sitting there, and how come they're not picking it up? Well, that's an additional charge to pick that up after Christmas, I believe, I'm not sure.
So can we touch base on that?
I'm, I'm being just generic.
Yep, yeah.
Not only the tree or, or the mattress, or the other, you know, miscellaneous. Some folks think they can put an old dryer or washing machine out at the curb, and Dick's is gonna pick it up, and it's all covered under my bill. That's not the case.
And we appreciate that, it isn't the case. It is certainly something we can pick up with notification and how to pick up. But the other part is, going back to your trees and/or yard waste, because we've had some issues there, too. People were wondering where yard waste is. In, after, in January, when Christmas trees were out on the road, we really didn't get, didn't get any information as far as residents that had signed up for yard waste. So we wouldn't have known who had yard waste or who didn't have yard waste. And what I've shared with you there are pictures of various yard waste containers. And if you can see, there's a probably, and that, and that's just a handful, there are several different types, sizes, and colored lids of yard waste with really hard identifiers. Our plan right now, and it's talking about proactive, last week, we had a, an employee go with the driver, and anybody who had yard waste carts out, that was a notification to contact our office. We had one hundred and twenty-nine notifications sent out, and a hundred and thirty-four people signed up for service that week. So we are trying to be proactive, but again, going back to Christmas trees.
Had a cart, but no yearly fee for the yard waste.
Right, so we've signed up several since then, and again, it's, we didn't get great information on this, but we're gonna work through that, right? And it's probably gonna be that sway for another couple of weeks until more people put out their containers, so. But we, and if we have to bring somebody out to audit again, but again, we did audit the, the routes, because we virtually had people chasing down the driver going, you didn't pick me up. Well, you weren't on his route, you didn't pay for the service, we can certainly do it and get it set up. No different than if you have a washing machine or a bulk item, contact us and we'll get that scheduled for pickup.
That recycle card you had would be really handy to have on somebody's refrigerator if it was a magnet or something, because it's right in the kitchen where you're putting all your recycle cans and stuff like that. Do you guys have them, or?
This calendar?
Yeah. You send them out?
Yes, and we can do, send it out to the city electronically.
Pardon me?
We can. We can also send it to you electronically, if you want to share.
We don't want to see a magnet bill on our list.
Is that on the city's link? We should probably check that.
Yeah, I have a lot of things to check on.
Okay.
That available, then that might help the recycling contamination issue.
Great point. I believe it's on our standard, but I'm not sure if it's on the website link for the city of Shakopee.
It needs to be in a printable form where people can print it and put it in there, buy their container and stuff.
More? More? Do you have more to talk to us about?
We're here to answer any questions available, but I think the big thing is, we understand we had issues. There's not a question. We think we've, we're in a position now that these issues are, are on the backside, and we're gonna see going forward much more communication. Our phone volume that we received at DSI, we didn't expect to have that kind of volume coming in because of weekly recycling. Dakota County has advertised this for years, so it, it's, it's not something that just happened. This was supposed to be implemented January first, due to shipping and trucking issues, we didn't get our trucks actually in time. The county is aware of it, but we didn't anticipate this kind of call volume. All billing has gone through for the most part, other than what, fourteen hundred? And our call volume should get back to normal, where now we can be the true partner with the city that we talked about in the first part, right? So we see things good moving forward.
So how, how do we help you?
As I'm writing down my notes, one, I, I want to thank you for allowing us to be here, this helps. As a partner, we need to communicate, and, and this is extremely important to us. So what I want to do, I have all my notes written down here, but the main one is, making sure we, we get in contact with, who, who manages your website, to the link from everything else has to go, I would think that's step one. And then coming down what we need to provide to have to that link. Maybe something we're not even thinking about tonight, but hey, if it comes, that person, hey, Mike, Trina, Jeff, we need this, let's get this on the website, and have open lines, that's number one. Number two, when we do anything that might just seem simply different in our industry, because this is what we're going to do, whether it's to roll out of the contamination, take in consideration, we have agreements and contracts with the city of Shakopee. Let's talk first and find out ways, because we're gonna probably reach out to you as well, especially when we see maybe an uptick in, in recollect, how we can get better recycling, how we can clean it up, what is a better way to do it? Because like I say, the object isn't to just get twenty bucks. Seeing twenty bucks on the bill, I'm making a phone call because that shouldn't be there, I can now explain to you why we did it, you're not gonna do it again, we'll waive it. Now, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna first, but if we see still an uptick in our, I call it the contamination rate, we're gonna ask you as partners, what we think we can do together, what, what's something we can put on the website? Isn't it event, we can show up with our trailer and be there and say, hey, you know, we have a recycling trailer, hey, what do you think, what can you recycle? Best one I love doing at all these events is just catching the kids. You got a water bottle, cap on or cap off, simple question. And then they get a cape, or we give them something, but it gets them engaged, maybe brings the parents in, maybe we can make a change. So I think the biggest thing is, is keeping this partnership going, keeping the lines of communication, we're here. That's what we have, we're, we're proud that we have this, we're grateful we have this, and we're glad to be back, and we want to make this work.
The water bottle goes in the recycle, but the cap doesn't?
Cap goes on top, screwed up.
Cap always, cap on always.
Cap on, cap on, cap on.
And then rinse out your soup cans, right? I get told this all the time. I'm the sanitation engineer, but I got a foreman over my shoulder every day.
Those are some of the things, and we don't want to take a bunch of your time, but those are some of the things where in the past, you threw it in there and those recycling ferries took care of it, right? And, and the problem is today, that's not real. And if you're in doubt, you throw it out. So, but we appreciate your time, if there's any questions, certainly contact us, if you have further questions, let us know.
Well, we appreciate you being in front of us, and yep, there's a lot of voices out there, people are very passionate about garbage, but thank you, and, and maybe we should do, revisit this again in September, and maybe, hey, it's running real smooth, right? And, because we have a partnership that's going on for a while here, so.
Mayor, I think it's important that if there's anything we as a city can do, you know, reach out, let us know. But it's, it's really hard for us to help you when, when there's no, there was no communication.
Right, and we appreciate that, and we've been in contact with Chelsea, and, and it's, you know, she's been phenomenal for us. And again, we're in avenues right now that we didn't anticipate. So it's also, we're still a little bit reactive to some items that we didn't think we'd be in this position, I guarantee you that, so. But thank you.
Jeff, Mike, thank you very much, and your team, appreciate it, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Next workshop item is nine B, the Twelfth Avenue East Reconstruction and Access Control Options, and Steve's gonna present, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Wanted to bring to you as a work session item and discuss one of our, one of our many projects that we've had with Canterbury Commons. And this is one of a, one of our last ones, or that's attached to the County Road eighty-three project, actually. So just in general overview, we started the Canterbury Commons TIF projects, if you will, back in twenty eighteen. We've, we're going around Canterbury is what we're doing. We started with Shenandoah on the west side, then we reconstructed Twelfth Avenue, then we built Unbridled, took over that road on the north side. And then this year, we're working with the county, and we're doing the County Road eighty-three project. With County Road eighty-three, we are doing the Twelfth Avenue intersection and a little beyond Twelfth Avenue to the east to transition from the traffic signal to divided roadway and with some access control. So one of the placeholders we've had in our TIF projects in our capital improvement plan was our project number ten, and that's what I have highlighted. And it was the driveway consolidation on the east side of County Road eighty-three. In the tune of about, we had a placeholder for one million dollars. So I wanted to go over a little bit with the existing issues, to just rehash and make sure everyone's aware of the existing issues. If you've driven out there, which I think all of you have, you know what the issues are. But the, the real issue is that little pinch point between Speedway and Culvers. It has the two lanes westbound and then the one lane eastbound, that transitions from, you know, more lanes on each side of that little pinch point. So that is why we have a, an issue there, and it's, visually, it's interesting when you're out there driving, because you, it's, it's almost when you're going through that intersection, it's what happened here type of thing. Just big picture, this type of development and the access control wouldn't be approved today. And it maybe goes back to the earlier conversation about county access control. This is why cities and counties have access control, is to avoid this scenario. And I think, you know, going forward, that we've done a pretty good job on this. But this is, this is why, because when we get to these scenarios and to try to retrofit them and integrate them with these existing developments, it's very difficult. There's a lot of balance and a lot of different interests, and it's, it's not always fun for, for both the property owners and, you know, on our end, trying to get a balance between safety and maintaining good equitable access to these properties. So the existing safety issues, it's a large intersection with a lot of different conflict points, back to back driveways on each side of the road, on the Culvers exit, when there's a right in and right out only, that causes people to actually leave that exit, and then they end up doing a U-turn around the median. It's just a mess out there. And that's not the private property owner's fault, it's collectively our fault for somehow allowing this to happen out there. But we're here to fix it, and, you know, this is an integral part of our County Road eighty-three project, and one of our overall goals is to fix this issue. So I wanted to bring up a little video here, just in case you've never driven out there. But here you're looking eastbound, Culvers is on the right, Ashley and Furniture Mart. But here you're looking eastbound Culvers is on the right, um, Ashley and Furniture Mart there in the far.
And, and it isn't even really all that many, much traffic there yet.
No.
There's been a heck of a lot more.
Yeah, here you see it's like this is, I just said, what is happening here? One little pinch point.
Nice.
Cars turning in front of each other and.
Bringing back my figure eight days.
Uh, we just set a camera out there in February, February second. I think that's the accurate time. So we, there wasn't, you know, we just randomly, let's go set a camera up out there, collect some video. So we didn't cap, you know, we didn't capture an accident. We didn't capture a sky is falling type of incident, you know? But none of these are great. You don't, you never want to see a car sitting there like that, trying to do a U-turn that just left, uh, like the Culvers access point. Um, and when it's busier during like the PM peak hour, this is two eleven, two eleven PM. Uh, so it's a little before that PM peak, uh, right now is just avoid this area. I can tell you that with the county road eighty-three work. But you can see here, and then if you watch right behind that snowplow truck, there's a pedestrian crossing there too. My gosh. Um, so this is messy. So we can go on and watch this for two minutes, but this, you know, this is what's happening out there daily. Um, and it gets worse and better and worse and a lot of unique scenarios going on out there. At night, we even had a video that went a little far. This one was interesting. The car is ready to do a U-turn and then a pickup and a trailer's coming out. And somehow gets across in front and it's just a lot of messy things going on out there. This is turbulent traffic flow. We never want to see this. So, um, so that's, this is the purpose of everything we're looking at here. So what did we do? Uh, step one was is we work with county road, with the county. And, um, we developed an ultimate layout for the roadway configuration. Um, and that's what we're looking at here. We, I won't talk too much about county road eighty-three, but we got two through lanes in each direction. Northbound to westbound to get to Canterbury, we got dual left turn lane. Um, if you're going eastbound and you come up to McDonald's, we have a dual right turn lane going in there. Um, the county actually, can I use my pointer here? This is disc drive down here south of McDonald's. They're, they're closing that permanently. So that's the purpose of this dual right turn lane. Um, if you're going, um, westbound, leaving the industrial area, we got two left turn lanes. So we've fixed really the, you know, the intersection operations and what you want to see out there for lane usage. For the amount of traffic that's out there. Um, but then when we get to the east leg, you know, what, what we have proposed here is not ideal. You know, typically we don't want to see an action, an intersection for three hundred feet. And three hundred feet is, if this is the zero point, here's one hundred, two hundred, three hundred at the absolute minimum. You know, this is typically where our three hundred thirty feet is usually where we're at. That's where we, you know, by our design guidelines, where we're going to see the first intersection at the absolute, you know, in today's design standards. So, so we're trying to retrofit and, uh, come up with a solution to consolidate six driveways. Um, that are beyond any of the locations. So, so that's difficult. Um, another difficult part is, um, uh, we, it, that's hard to do, to get all property owners say, sure, let's go do that. But it, you know, there's a lot of different, um, a lot of, a lot of different, uh, uh, um, interests for the different property owners. Um, so when we developed plans with county road eighty-three. Um, we didn't have a solution yet, but we had to bid that project and have something on plans. So this is what's on the plans right now. It's basically putting the driveways back where they were. But working with the county, that was never our intention. Um, you know, this, when we started developing plans, it was over two years ago. So our intention was is the city is going to work with the property owners and come up with a master plan that everybody's on board with. And we're going to make this work. Um, well, we've been trying. And, um, we haven't quite got there. Um, so the issues that remain, uh, you know, a, a couple of the key issues is this Speedway access. It really needs to be closed. It's just too close to the intersection. This Culvers access, the right in is okay. It's not great, but the right out, uh, we, we want to, our, our, our goal is to eliminate that right out. And that will avoid the U-turn that's happening out there. And then in the number three area, it's about all those points of conflicts. Um, there's four driveways. And now, you know, not only do we have, um, two westbound and one eastbound lane. We have five lanes through that, through those driveways now. So we've compounded all those different conflict points. And when I talk conflict points, I'm going to go back a few slides. A normal intersection in the top right there, all those little dots, they're conflict points. So compound, compound that by multiple lanes and then multiple driveways. And it's all those different conflict points and you, that's the goal when you're doing roadway design is to minimize those conflict points. But with our project, with the county road eighty-three project, we didn't minimize them. We've increased them unless we can do access control. So that's our goal and trying to consolidate access, access control and why we want to do that.
Officer Lehman has a question.
Steve, I'm looking at the number three on your chart here where the four access points are. And I'm also looking at the left turn going eastbound, right by the end of the red wall in the middle. Okay?
Yep.
Yep, right there. If you were to put eight roundabout where the number three is, it would connect all four of them driveways. It would get rid of the left turn lane at the end of that. It would slow traffic going, coming west, slow that down. So number one would, with the wall would become a right in, right out only. And it would be slowed down coming from the east. Number two would, would be a right in, right out only because the wall's in the way. And they'd be able to make a U-turn at the roundabout at number three.
You need to join our design team.
Not a roundabout fan. I'm really, but, but if there's a location that it might work, it might be right here. And it keeps all the accesses, so you don't have that fight. You don't have to take a whole bunch of, uh, land that I'm looking at in this chart to make all kinds of internal changes. So. That's my thirty-second overview.
I'm not a roundabout expert, but I would think that that would slow down traffic at the stop sign and back everybody up.
Short of squashing that, I would, I would just comment on a few things. It's, uh, usually you want good spacing between a roundabout and a traffic signal. You don't want traffic to back up into the roundabout. Um, and on the video, even with more lanes, it has a real good, it's too close. You know, with, with roundabout spacing, you want about a quarter mile between intersections. And a couple of other things, it's like you, you want to try to have a balanced flow of traffic. And here you have most of the traffic on the through movements. So it, it would be, if, if we went through a intersection control evaluation and we go through MINDOT approval on these. MINDOT would probably say you have too many legs. It's too close. You have a too much of an unbalance in traffic. That's the wrong decision. That's what they would tell me. I'm not telling you that. I'm tell, I'm telling you what they tell me. So.
So and now this is a MINDOT project and they're funding it?
All right, no.
Yeah.
But twelfth avenue is our state aid route and we need MINDOT approval on that route for everything we do on that. Otherwise we can't, in the future, we couldn't use gas tax dollar for twelfth avenue. So MINDOT does have, um, approval jurisdiction for the use of our gas tax dollars on this road. But I, I love the idea, but very difficult to get a roundabout to work in this area. So we've been trying to, you know, in an ideal world, um, again, we, in an ideal world, we'd close the Speedway access at number one. We'd close the Culvers access at number two and somehow have frontage roads and just have one driveway going to the north and one to the south. And they would line up straight across the road from each other. And we'd have longer turn lanes, you know, that, that turn lane that council member Lehman would just mention about. Our starting point for a standard left turn lane is three hundred feet. That is about fifty feet. So a lot of substandard things here and we try to get a balance, right? So every foot we use for this eastbound and northbound left turn lane, we take away from the opposite side, go in the opposite direction. So it's still substandard on everything we're doing there, unless we were to eliminate all these driveways and we know we can't do that. So again, we try to get a balance between everything I just talked about, safety and property owners. And side note, we do have property owners in the audience. So, um, and I think they, you're mostly for Ashley Furniture and Furniture Mart. I think all of them, so property owners and representatives. So we've been working with the property owners, um, and you know, we, we, we didn't come in here and say, we are going to do this. And we're going to condemn property and take it and you're going to like it. Uh, we've had some spirited conversations. Um, but it has been, we, we are going to drop, what we did is we drew up a lot of options and iterations and meetings and, um, and we've come close to getting to some solutions. Um, so that's, that's where we at, where we're at right now. So I want to, um, I want to talk about a, a couple of things though is when, when we. Pardon me for one second here. So I just said it, we're not going to just come in here and this is how it's going to be done. But on the side, we did consult with our city attorney and, and so the city council knows, you know, the city has certain rights on access control. Um, for example, um, Speedway, and I'll go back one slide here. Speedway has two driveways right here, one right here. So their parcel line is about this dotted line going up. So they have one full access right here and one partial access, like right in, right out only. In normal circumstances, the city has the right to close, like where number one is. Typically we can just, we have, we have the right to basically go in there and close that. So I wanted the city council to know that, um, with a caveat though. You know, and it, and it's with the caveat that it has to have a legitimate government interest. We're doing it for the public good, the public welfare. And it would satisfy a safety interest.
We're doing it for public safety and you and I have been talking about this intersection for probably two and two plus years. And, you know, we always went forward with is that we're going to try to get an agreement and try to make something work. But at some point, we have to fix this. And, and if the, if the property owners aren't going to come to the table as a group and, and give us the opportunity to make this thing safer. Then we're going to have to do something else. And, and you know, the bottom line is, is that this is the time. We have this particular intersection that we've known, we all know that this is one of the top two worst intersections. County road, road seventeen, uh, and Marystown being the other, uh, uh, the worst ones that we have. So, um, I mean, so we, we, we certainly have tried for over two years to come to an agreement. The clock is ticking and we're about done with that process.
So we've, whoops, we went through a lot of different iterations. So with Speedway, um, now in one sentence, I say, we have the right to do that when we have multiple access points. There's difficulty with Speedway right now and, uh, it's probably for a closed session, to be honest with you, um, for liability reasons. We are, you know, the county involved us in their condemnation proceedings. With county road eighty-three and Speedway is part of them condemnation proceedings. So when that happened, um, we still have that right. But with the condemnation proceeding, it has some other connotations to closing things. So, um, so with, if I go around the, go around the horn here, um, our, our recommendation is not to close Speedway at this time. Um, when the overall project is done, uh, and I, I'm going to go to this diagram here. But again, Speedway, we wanted to close this, but because it's under a current project and the condemnation proceedings are not a hundred percent complete yet. Um, our, our, talking with legal counsel, it's advised to, um, leave that driveway alone. Um, monitor it. And if we have to do something in the future pertaining to safety, what is something? It'd be close it. Uh, we would do that. Um, otherwise it would jeopardize those condemnation proceedings and or pause them, um, which isn't the end of the world. But, um, that, out of all the issues, that's probably the least issue. Because it's, they, they simply are, they're just not going to be able to leave and that, they're not going to be able to get out of there until they can jump across two lanes to take a left turn. So everyone sees that, right? So there might be, you know, if I go there and I see traffic backed up, I'm probably going to leave out the other, the back access, if you will. And try to get a gap in there to jump in the line. So, um, our recommendation is going to be, you know, ultimately again, this, this diagram shows what we wanted to do. And it was close this driveway or what we thought we were real close working with all the property owners collective to do. Um, so Speedway, they have rejected closing, um, that access point. They, between United Properties and Cyber Power, um, and Speedway, they've also had zero interest in doing a common driveway and have their traffic, um, crossing on each other's property. They just simply were not interested in that and they said no and no. Um, so what we then did is like, okay, we can maintain this full access with Speedway. And then individually working with United Properties and Cy- Cyber Power, they agreed to close their driveway access. And move it, relocate it way back here. So check, check. That's a win. That helps us. Um, yes, the Speedway access is here, um, and that blue line is a property line. So that's kind of our touchdown point on the north. We want our intersection, we want our driveways to line up across from each other as best as we can. So then on the south, uh, we work with Culvers, with American and Ashley Home Store and Furniture Mart. Um, we've had a lot of discussions. We went through the prior page. We went through these iterations. We've had professionally designed and laid out and crayon, a lot of different sketches, a lot of different ideas. Um, a lot of ideas that work for some and not for others. Um, we, we felt this was a good balance and actually I, I think, I think, I, I think I would have a head nod that most will be okay with this. Um, but you know, and I'm not going to talk for American. But, um, our experience with American right now is they wanted us to set up the green road, if you will, the one that comes south. So if we, so our plan was to build what's in the color here with TIF money on the private property. Get a right of entry and build this for them to clean up this access issue. But what American wanted was for us to build the roadway and then basically through, through us doing that, guarantee that it would be developable and he could put X building on this, on this north site, et cetera. And we, we don't want to do that, right? It's a private site. We're not going to lay out a parking and driveway system on their site. And then rubber stamp it like it's buildable. So, um, with that caveat, we, we just, we can't guarantee that to that property owner. So, um, I'm not going to speak for Ashley Furniture either, but they, um, uh, they have come to the table and they said, city, we will work with you. We want this to work. We understand the overall purpose and, um, goal and we want to work with you. But if you, the problem here is this light blue line running down here, that's the American property line. And the light blue line running down here is the American property line. So our option here is we have to have American on board to do this option. Without them being on board, we simply cannot do this. So, uh, and, and what does this do? It provides, this option would provide pretty good access to, um, all the sites for that matter. Full access and nothing really too circuitous or inconvenient. We thought this was a good balance. It consolidates the access. Um, this, this right in only, we pushed it down here away from the primary county road eighty-three intersection. So this would be a right in only. So we, we thought this was a good option, but we can't do that because we don't have property rights to do it. So.
I've got a question on that. I'm sorry to interrupt, but on, uh, you said you couldn't do it on the American in property. Even with eminent domain, if they had to go to that level, could that be done on that property?
Most likely.
All right.
Um, so we came up with an iter- So, we came up with an iteration, um, where we, you know, working with the city attorney, it's something we can do. With the, with the, with the, the city's rights and with a little cooperation from United Properties in this scenario. So, again, it would not be closing the Speedway access, basically maintaining their current driveway right here where my cursor is, closing United Properties and Cyber Power and moving it, um, to the east. And then on the south, it would be, uh, pushing the Culvers right in, right out only, a little to the east, keeping it on their property and just changing it to a right in only. For the American, it's basically keeping their access where it is. The pinch point here and with our friends in the audience, this is the, probably the problem with this, with this option is it would, our proposal is to convert this to a, a right in only with a raised median through this area. So, their customers could, you know, most of their customers are coming from County Road eighty-three and into their site, but it would require their customers to leave their site, you know, around the building and on the east side. So, it's all, it's all feasible. One, one side note, is there, you know, this, this area here, it's, it's our loading dock area. It might not be utilized right now under the current, you know, with Ashley Furniture and Furniture Mart there, but it is a loading dock. So, we have to be sensitive to that, not only to the current user, but a potential future user where, where that loading dock would be needed. So, that, that's why we need to maintain this area and all those different, um, iterations we did. So, just so many things working against each other here.
How do you leave Culvers if you can only enter?
So, so leaving Culvers...
It's not bad to stay there for a week or two, but...
You can, they, they have a access across into American property currently, so it would be leaving here.
Well, if they have that already in their agreements, how could American think they could build there?
So, I don't know if they have an agreement, to be honest with you, I think it was just done. I, I have not seen an agreement between, I can be wrong on this too, but, um, I'm not aware of an agreement between Culvers and American. There might be one, we didn't do a title search on it, but, um, but that, you know, so... So, it's there existing, but that doesn't fix, you know, the, the full access for Ashley Home Furniture.
Right, but if we do this scenario and they don't have something with the American, they might be able to receive customers and they can't ever leave.
Well, you know, I, I've, I've worked on this a little bit, I've talked to a couple owners over the last year. Uh, we need to consolidate these access points, um, to make it safer, actually, to make it better. I agree that there's, there's five owners, six access points, this would never have been built today, right? Poor planning back then, too many access points, too many turns, and of course, twenty years of growth, um, as well. But, um, this is not a good situation and we got to, I think everybody agrees we need to fix it, um, to make it better. We need to come together, I, you know, before Speedway said no, it's cool that United Properties, I think the folks at Ashley Furniture, which are a big asset in our community, uh, you know, they've come around. Culvers is a champion, um, you know, that place is very, very busy, but I agree, 'cause I go there and that access point. The American Inn has been a lot, um, around, I look at your preferred option and I go, we, here we have a strong consensus, almost a majority, four or five owners, and we're taking the amount of access points and cutting them in half from six to three, and I go, I like that and I, you know, before there were two or three businesses that were opposed and now we're, we're down to one, I wish we could find a way to get American in. 'Cause I, this whole concept of making it better, um, should be a, should be a strength and I think access is real important. All these businesses play an important role in our community, but improved access, I think in the long term, will better each and every one of these businesses.
Mayor, can I make a couple more points? So, preferred on the screen right now and, um, doable on the screen right now, you know, this is what we're recommending at this point. So, I have, I have patience, but what I don't have is time right now. This is, this project is, is, needs to be done under the County Road eighty-three project and, um, that's underway right now. I, I really, why am I here today talking about this now is I need direction and consensus from city council because, um, I need to move forward with developing a plan to give to the county, to give to the contractor, so they can build it. And I really need to have that, um, at least the city's position solidified by the end of June here. So, we can turn all that around and have it ready by August for construction, 'cause that's when they're going to be most likely on that leg of the intersection. So, um, that's why I'm here, uh, you know, we're, we're not jumping for joy about looking at this option, um, but it's something doable. And I, I know our friends in the audience, uh, they would probably say otherwise, I can guarantee that. But, but that's where we're at, you know, there, there are other options here, um, and it would get, you know, I think we have the north side okay for, you know, to, to get us to, you know, a point where we can improve the safety on that side. On the south side, this will work to get to this point, you know, the, the preferred option. There, there's, you know, we've, we've talked with our, with Ashley Furniture and Furniture Mart, we talked with Culvers and, um, they even suggested Culvers or Ashley Furniture potentially buy that north half from American. So, there's, there's ideas out there where this can still happen in a short amount of time, but I don't have much in my toolbox to make it happen on my timeline right now.
No, this, this is, uh, one of them projects is can't make everybody happy and, uh, other than the drivers that use that area, hopefully, eventually we'll get there. Tell me now, if we went with the proposed option to move things forward, but kept the preferred option as our goal, are there things in this, uh, proposed option that are gonna detract? Or can we, uh, will this get us through until we can get to the preferred option?
Uh, Mayor and council members, uh, very good point, we can do this, we could do this option right here, uh, you know, the, our recommended option at this point. And really the difference between this option and if I flip back, it's really these two driveways from American and Ashley Furniture. They're consolidated right here in this option, so we could, we could do the option and in the future, if something can be worked out, we could remove the two driveways and consolidate them, but the, so that, that would work, um, you know, yep.
Well, if I can continue, um, I would, my, my preference is the preferred option and I would use every tool we had to do that. And again, that's not gonna make everybody happy, but if we can do the proposed option and, and stretch it out and, and, uh, try and work with people, uh, without detracting from that future project, that's probably the best angle.
Counselor Contreras, comment?
I mean, I don't, I'm just looking at it and I've driven there many times and, I mean, I feel that, um, I'm with, with, um, Counselor Whiting is saying. I mean, I'd love to get what we want, but like you said, you don't have enough time, so we do what is being suggested now, so we can get there. I mean, I don't have anything else, sorry.
Counselor, okay, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, my, my concern is back to if, if, if we do this proposed option layout and there's no agreement for Culvers to use American Inn to exit, we've essentially bought Culvers because we put them out of business.
Mayor, Mayor and council members, if I can comment on that, um, we, we consulted our city attorney on that issue and, um, I, I don't have it at my fingertips, but it, it was, I'll use the word perpetual easement, which is not right, but he felt there was a certain, uh, you know, guaranteed right because it has been that way, it was built that way, it's been being used that way. So, um, and I can confirm more on that, you know, legally versus me mumbling it up a little bit here before we would do anything. I, I would confirm that indeed, you know, specifically on this map, that, that this would have to be maintained, 'cause you're absolutely right. We would not wanna go forward with this if that cut that access off.
And then if we go back to the preferred option, is there any, is there anybody here from, uh, American?
I do not think so.
No.
Okay, I, I would be curious to hear from them, why they, why they would be opposed to this option.
I, I don't think they're necess, so, little background is we worked for quite a while with the American property owner and then they sold, then he sold, that group sold it to the new property owner, like in the last six months or so. So, it's also been a little unique situation.
Okay.
So, then the property owner, the current property owner is really open to these ideas. I'm not saying he's not, I'm saying, but there's a little baggage that goes with it.
Sure, they're just, they're not finalized in what they're doing with the transfer and all that stuff, I get it. My last comment, Mayor, if we, now if you wanna look at where these two green connection points are in comparison with what's across the street, okay? So, the big leg is right between the two driveways across the street. Now, if you go back to your other option, or your pref, there you go, proposed, this leg on the right is moved quite a bit to the right.
That's the existing, but we're gonna put that red medium, we're gonna put the medium...
Right, but this here and the, and the other option is over here.
Right.
Okay, so now if, if, if we do in the future, if we do what's on this screen right now and we come back in the future and everything lines up to do the preferred option, we're gonna be tearing up a brand-new street and a brand-new trail to move everything ten feet to the left.
Mayor, Mayor and council members, it, it would be, you know, in the driveway or the driveway is in the trail, not so much the street. You know, you, you see out here what we have to do to redo driveways, you cut about a foot out into the street and redo it. So, it's slicing and dicing some of our brand-new stuff out there. I don't like it, but Councilmember Whiting asked if we could do that, we can and it happens out there. And then we do it and then we come and chip seal coat over it and then we disguised it with some paint.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, why don't you move them two to line up with the preferred option? So that if you come back with the preferred option, the cuts are already there.
It's close, maybe I'm not quite following you, but I mean...
Okay, look, area C, see where area C, right there. If you go directly across the street, you'll notice you'll be between the two driveways, okay?
I mean, it's skewed there, no doubt about it.
Well, you're, you're, you're directly between the two driveways.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, now go back to the other one.
Oh, yeah, I, we've went through a lot of iterations.
And now you've got this one that is not now directly between the two driveways, it's actually to the right of the...
Yeah, they match the existing driveway access points, yep, yep. And the other one, the other one, the other iteration is right where the hand is, right?
Yep.
And, you know, ideally, if I go back here, we, we wanted to push this further to the left, right? So, it is perfectly across the street. But American Property doesn't want that area encumbered on his parcel necessarily. So, it's trying to get the balance of everything and we shifted it about as far right as we can feasibly shift it to make that skew work through the intersection, right? It's the balance.
Okay, Counselor Brennan?
Culvers, and I go there often and, and I, and it terrifies me every time I go there. And to pull out, and I took my new driver one time, my new young son, through that intersection, which was a bad idea 'cause he panicked. So, I, I, but I think a lot of the, um, issue is also for me is, is to the east with High, um, Twelfth Avenue and the straight shot that people take. So, I think the, um, the, um, medians that are up there will really help in slowing down the area. But it definitely needs work done, so, um, I hope that we can come up with some, um, agreement, but I would go with the, um, the proposed option, I don't know which one that is, the proposed option for now.
All right, um, you know, I'll just speak to it again, um, this has come a long way and we're almost there. I appreciate Ashley Home Furniture Mart, Culvers, American Inn, and they're involved in the discussion, United Properties, Speedways. In the long picture, twenty years from now, this is, this is gonna get better, but we have to make it better for public safety. From a city standpoint, we're willing to do this, but I just wanna do it once, right? I, I hate that we have to do things twice over time or, you know, in, in, in short periods of time. Ten, fifteen years, I'm more of a long-term planner and if we did it right, we can go to the preferred option at a later date, but I, I wanna try to do it right once and I, that's where I say, boy, the access points on the preferred route, uh, get dropped by fifty percent. We have a strong, almost majority of, uh, the owners on board except for one of five. We need to come together, um, and, and do it once for the efficiency of these businesses to not possibly go through two disruption on their access points if we had to go to the preferred method later, um, also for efficiency of government, so. But this council, four or five of, of, uh, recommended this option that's showing, so...
That's, that's not what I said, I prefer, preferred the preferred option.
Oh, the preferred option.
Yeah, but if we can't get there without, uh, moving into, uh, legal means, uh...
Can you come forward? This is only a workshop, so, not a public hearing or anything, but we'd love to...
I have a question for Steve.
Hear from you, please come forward, state your name for, and address for the record at the table? And speak into the mic? Okay, in just one minute, I guess we have a question, Counselor Lehman wants to ask a question of staff, you can be seated.
Steve, could, could we make them two driveways, one cut down curb and then maybe put a couple ballards in between them? So that we can just come back later, pass the curb cut, take the ballards out and move on with the preferred option?
We, we can do a lot of things, um, that would probably, I, I'm not quite following what you're saying, so maybe we look at that...
We'd make them wider than what's on here, so they would line up with the preferred option. And then we could put a ballard on each side of it, back off of the curb line. Then later, if you get your preferred option, you can just take the ballards out and everything's already there and you don't have to tear up the street and the curb.
It's a possibility.
Good evening and welcome and we're glad you're here.
Thank you, very glad to be here. I see you're just in, what I've seen so far, I see how you kind of work together and I think that's good because it's kinda, kinda sitting back here listening to, it, uh, it just was breaking my heart. And making this decision even to go as far as if they wanted us to go is breaking my heart because I don't feel we belong where all this traffic is. And the only accidents that's been out in front of our drive, our parking lot is two in the last five and a half years. Where all the accidents are occurring is down there, where, where all the traffic, there's eight hundred cars coming out of that, that restaurant every day, especially weekends. So, all that stuff that's happening, that's, that you check all the accidents that's happening, they're all in that clump right there. So, so why should, why should our store that's, that's, that's out of the way here, I mean, we're not even, we're not, we're, we're a block away from that. And we, we've been able to get out of there, we have tours, you know, I, I bought that property twenty-two years ago and I'll give you a little background, I drove by it, I bet fifty times before I finally decided, boy, that's a beautiful piece of ground there. So, and I raised enough money to buy the property. So, I, I owned it all the way down, including the, the little, uh, 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 storage area and I sold those pieces off to the hotel and to Goodyear, to, to, or to, to the, uh, the good, good, uh, good people that, that have a wonderful, uh, place there, it's clean and they do a great business. And then we have the doctors in that other area, but our two furniture stores, uh, fifty-four furniture stores now, which I can say we are blessed to have and I can, I don't know how it happened, but we, we have thirteen hundred people work for us. We do an awful lot of business in Minnesota, we do a lot of charity work. in, right in Minneapolis and St. Paul, and I could give you a list of that. But these two stores are probably our two best stores in our whole system. And we get people in there from all over, uh, you know, over in Minneapolis, St. Paul, every place, way out of town, they come in for those two stores, because one is an Ashley store, and, and if I told you the business it did, you, you'd understand it. Because we get a lot of older people, and when they come in that driveway, they're gonna go back out that driveway. Because no one's gonna tell them, you know, stand and say, hey, you gotta go around the other end, or come, come over here. Or you can draw a line, and all those roads they put up and down, you know, just, just so they can, they can take care of, of the, of the, of the, the, uh, the ice cream place, I mean, I think it's wonderful. But, you know, we need that facility to be able to get in and out, and the older people that can't remember that they came in, they know where they came in, but they don't know where they're gonna go out. It's a block and a half away to go down past the other store and get turned around to get back on the thing. So we, we tried to, you know, we've tried to work with it and look at it, but I talked to some of the salespeople that work there, and they said that'll take half our business away. We will lose half of our store's business in those two stores if we do that. And so, so for me, that is not something, you know, I, I, I just, I gotta tell you that that's, that, those two stores, in fact, we're planning a remodel this, this, uh, this summer for, for the Furniture Mart itself inside. You know, and they're two, they're two great stores, they have great salespeople, you know, of, of, of our group of salespeople, we had, we had five of them that were between those two stores that wrote a million dollars last year. And, and that's amazing, that's just amazing, but it's, it's from, you know, you, you, you know, our company has forty customer service people that take care of every call that comes in, so we can get on right away, so we can keep our business good. So, so we're continuously, you, you know, growing our business and, you know, and, and seeing wonderful people that do wonderful things. You know, we're just extremely happy with Shakopee, and we've been involved in a lot of things here. We get involved with, with the four hundred red-haired ladies that wear their hats. We take care of, we have the, we have an award we got from the school system itself, the school ballot it's called. And we got that because every year we bring all the clothing that, you know, that we can to, to the, that we get, that we pick up at Cub Foods. We take them to the schoolhouses, and then the, the, the red-haired ladies that do the, that have the, go down and, and bring kids down and find clothing for them before the, before the winter starts, and we've done that for twelve years. You know, so I, I just tell you, we belong here, I was born and raised in St. Paul, so I'm, I'm familiar with the cities. But this thing isn't, that's not going to work, it isn't, not for us.
Let me make sure I'm clear with what you're saying, sir.
We're really not in that big bunch where all the traffic's coming out and where the hotels coming from, somehow,
The preferred map, sir?
Somehow they wanna wrap us up in it.
So my, uh, what I'm asking is, you prefer the preferred layout, could you put that up, Steve, please?
We just took that because we're, you know, we, we, Troy has been working on this, and he's tried so hard to try to figure out a way. But you tried to try all those roads, and when you have eight hundred cars coming in that restaurant, they gotta go out somewhere.
Right.
So what they talked about for, for a while was just to put a driveway that would go over to our driveway. So then they could go, they could come out of there and go out of our driveway. But, you know, can, can you see how you're, how you're gonna, how, how are you gonna handle eight hundred cars to be coming out of there? You know, I think the main thing, if they could figure out how to get, get those cars out of there, we're far enough away. I, I really don't think that, that we're in danger of, of creating any accidents. You know, and, and we were trying, we, we got Troy talked, and we thought maybe we could do this, just this right in, but we can't, we can't do that. We, we just can't, and, and we sat down and, and talked to some of the salespeople, talked to some of the customers. You know, and those two stores are wonderful for Shakopee, they honestly are. They bring a lot of people to this market, you know, and they come in here for these stores.
I, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand where you're coming from, I, I understand you don't want to do anything with your part of the property, but.
You know, if we're looking at only right in, we can't even go right out.
Well, we, you're part, you're part of the, you're not part of the, you, you see you're kinda out of the area, but you are gonna be part of the solution, I guess I'll say, be- because we have to do something. Do you agree we have to do something? You agree that we have to do something with this?
Well, I, 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 I agree, something, something has to be done, but I don't think, I don't think we've found it yet.
Is that, is the option on the screen right now acceptable? Because then you can go in and out and it's right next to your existing driveway.
Yeah, well, when, when you, when you look at our driveway, we're, we're, we're almost a block away from, from their driveway. If you go out and walk that, you'll see it's, it's further than it looks on this test paper here.
I think the Ashley Furniture folks, on the preferred option, as the last bullet point says, they agree to access consolidation, uh, if they can get American in. The option that, the other option that we, we're trying to work on is, actually creates that the loop road in Ashley Furniture would be just a, and in because we're raised on barrier there, and you can't come out on the west side and turn left.
What she's telling us is unacceptable.
Right, right.
Would just add, you know, we've worked a lot with, um, uh, Director Little Hogg and, and, and the team, and, you know, thank you for all the efforts and, 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 and time you've put in, um, you know, I worked with the former owners of American, tried to get them. Mayor Mars, you and I spoke, so this isn't without a, a lot of sweat equity.
Right.
Right, so, you know, just to put some numbers to this conversation, because, uh, in our business, numbers set us free. We certainly understand what you're talking about with the, w- w- you know, with the safety. We have seventy cars that come on our property every day. Each car to us is worth about eighteen hundred dollars. There are eight hundred Culvers cars, each car to them is worth about fifteen dollars, twenty dollars. So we're talking about a significantly different business model. Uh, over the twenty years that, that we've owned this property, we've generated about six million dollars in property tax just from this property. As Bill said, we developed the rest of the properties as well, and we believe we're significant contributors, you know, to, to the, uh, to the local economy.
Nobody's, nobody's doubting that, our problem is, is that we have a safety situation. We understand that you're members of the community, that's why we've worked so hard for the last two years to try to find a solution.
Yeah, but we've been part of the conversation for two years, you know, respectfully, I know, I get it.
I understand that.
This is our first opportunity to speak to the council.
But the clock is about to run off because of what we need to do.
But why is this our first opportunity to speak to the council? So let me just continue and finish, I respect everything that you're saying, I really do, I respect all of you. And, and Congressman, Congressman, or, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lehman, I really think you're on to something, right? I think where you're going is right. Where you're trying to go is say, I don't want to do this project twice, I don't want to do it three times. You have a card, you even asked the question earlier today, and that was just about, can't we do eminent domain? Isn't there a way to buy this? Isn't there a legal issue with Culvers and that, right in, right out, left out? Isn't there something, isn't there something that can be done? Every single time we've had a conversation with staff, that has not been on the table. That has not been a conversation we've had on the table. Why is that? Why are we not talking about that?
Because the whole point was to try to agree to a solution.
Yeah, so, so I don't accept that it's our problem to solve, as Bill said, we're three hundred-plus feet outside the normal way. If we were building this today, it would get approved.
No, that would not get approved.
We've been there for, for eighteen years, and some of the stuff here is coming down here, especially, you know, Culvers is the Culvers. You know, why can't they jump in here and try to figure out, you, you know, how they can, how, how they can solve their issue? You know, because they, they're the ones that have all the, all the car, that's where the, that's where the accidents are. They're where that one yellow is, right there, when the come, cars come out of the gas station, now if you stop the gas station, what you're gonna do.
Interesting discussion, because, uh, when I spoke with Ashley, they didn't want that barrier and didn't want that. And then we have a preferred option, and you're in, except for now I got, instead of you being out on the other plan, now I got another, uh, another business owner that's out. Um, I just want to do it once, I think this is a great workaround, it, I think it helps you guys, it helps the whole area. Um, and I agree on that.
We're gonna solve Culvers problems, but we're, we're gonna create a broader.
Counselor Lehman?
If I can a- if I can ask.
It's just, you know, that when they, when they gave us the right in and didn't even give us the right out, you know, that, that kinda hurt.
This, this plan doesn't show that.
If, uh, if I could ask a question of you two fine gentlemen, looking at this map, how would you solve Culvers in and out on this map?
I, I think you're on to it, I th- I, right, I think you asked the right question, which is, can we use eminent domain? Can we do this one time? I think you can on the north part, and you just work through the legal issues that you have as a city. And you connect what we are calling this perpetual easement, air quotes, which I don't know if it is or not. You solve that with, by condemning a north sliver of that at an acceptable transfer price, and you build that, uh, uh, a transfer right there. I think that's a really easy solution, I think that's doable in a timeline, I.
Well, let's, I just, I'm gonna back up and just clarify, so, Counselor Lehman, were you talking about eminent domain for the preferred option?
I was saying if we went, go back to the other. I was saying, take these two
Yeah, yeah.
points here. Line them up with the other preferred option. Make it wider. So we would condemn that section, that would allow us to move forward now. Um, and we would only be taking what's already in a right-of-way or easement for a transportation access.
Doesn't solve Ashley's issue.
Let me, let me finish, and then we would be able to put, the project would be able to move forward on a timely fashion. And we, we would have time to work through the legal issue with Unat- with American Inn to get to the preferred option. So, his timeline would be met, he'd be able to move forward, we would talk to American, if they don't want to work something out, we would end up with the preferred option at the end of the day. Which would require a closed session with staff.
I would use eminent domain and go for the preferred method.
Well, so then if they did that, they could, if that was all a driveway right there, and they could just swing out and turn, turn, turn into the, turn that way or go that way. You know, if, uh, if, if, if we're, if our, if our vehicles could do that too. Uh, if they had a right, right going the other way, then they're gonna have to go down somewhere and do a U-turn. And that's, they, they didn't like the word U-turn, either. But, uh, if you got something in the middle, it's, it'll be easier to get around.
There's a reason I think this conversation's two years old, this is a hard conversation to have. And respectfully, this is the first time we've been able to have it in front of all of you, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Is your, I just want to clarify that Ashley, you agree to the preferred option if you can get American to agree. And you're opposed to the, you're opposed to the, to the proposed plan?
A modified preferred option, which is what Councilmember Lehman said, it's, it's probably modified.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think his modification, to be clear, would be to take the right-side driveway and move it to the right, so it lines up with your existing.
So, so Mayor and Councilmembers, what, what we didn't want to do.
Bring us back together, Steve.
Well, what, what we don't want to do is have those eight hundred cars from Culvers driving through a loading dock area.
Right.
So that's why this is separated, and, and so we moved this driveway as far to the right as we could.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't be encroaching on any developable area on American property. And, you know, but to maintain turning movements for potential semi-tractor trailers in this area, so. You know, we, that's, that's what, that was part of our balance here, um.
Would that be a right in and right out? Could you come out of that driveway and make a left?
Oh, when you're talking a right out, to make.
On the other option.
On the other option.
Preferred, on this one, it's a.
So this, this is full access, you can, any, anything, out of, out of area C, where the area C is pointed, yeah, full access. So, again, we've, these, I'm showing five different iterations here, there's five plus more behind the scenes in a lot of different iterations. So we've moved a lot of driveways around and, in a lot of different locations, I mean, you know, here it's lined up, the blue property line is here.
Yeah.
You know, we've shifted these driveways around, and we've, we've looked at all those iterations, you know, we've, we've done it, and we, we thought.
Let's go down the line again, Counselor Contras.
Thank you, Mayor, um, for what it's worth, I just want to value that these business owners are here. They took their time to be here and tell us what doesn't work for them and what works. So I'm willing to help them, because I don't see the other ones, so, in their favor, I'm willing to help them out. So do what, a way that will help them out, and thank you for coming and talking to us.
Counselor Brennan?
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with that, Stephen.
You agree with?
Yep.
Okay. So, what I'm really hearing is to push forward with the preferred option.
All right, I'll come up with a game plan, uh, I have a couple ideas, and, uh, you know, short of condemnation, maybe it is a some other type of agreement with American property owner, rather than condemnation.
But I, as I understand, conden- condemnation takes a long time.
It's ninety days minimum, so.
So the process may need to get started when it needs to get started.
Might not cut it, it might be a friendly acquisition, if you will.
Something, yeah.
Would probably even be cheaper.
You have enough direction from us?
Thank you.
Thank you for, I know that you've been involved in this for a long time, and here we're getting closer, and thank you for everything.
Again, the, the one that you're, you're thinking about doing, can, can we see that?
That one, the preferred one.
Consensus from council to try to drive forward on the preferred option, this one.
You'll have no access.
The cars come down now on the green, are they coming out of, out of the, out of the ice cream place? Coming down to the green and then crossing over?
Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers, what I would say is, we, we can do a lot of different iterations from this and continue working with Ashley Furniture to get something even better than this, so.
Right, I think that's the point, Mayor, yes. This isn't it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you guys, really, you know, and I love Shakopee, this is one of my favorite cities, so.
Your store too, I go broke whenever I go in there, thank you.
So many times, because they, they've done a lot of, a lot of really good work, so.
Thanks for being a part of our community.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving ahead then, ten A, uh, city bill list, any questions, comments on the city bill list for our review? Seeing none, we would move to ten B, these on administrative reports, and we're gonna start down here, Counselor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll try to do this super fast, um, for, um, I attended the, um, on May, May nineteenth, that was after our last meeting, um, the, uh, try so much for fast, Chambers Women event, which was dedicated to helping grow, uh, growing women in, um, in their personal and professional development. On the twentieth, um, attended Bittner's one-year celebration and ribbon cutting. Um, and then on the, yesterday, um, the swearing-in of Officer James Gil- Gillam and Officer Jonathan Wiseman uh, with the school board. On the nineteenth, I attended the feather ceremony and the star quilt presentation to our American Indian students, and that was their recognition. On the twenty-third, I attended also with the high school, uh, to Representative Angie Craig, which she came to visit the engineering and the manufacturing academies and the special education wing. On the twenty-fourth, I also attended the, um, Pollen- um, Pollinators Prairie, which we partnered up with Excel and Scott County Soil, Water and Conservation District. And that's an eight acres of farmland where we will be, um, 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 uh, pollinator habitat was planted, oh my goodness, too much here. And this is all gonna help increase, um, habitat for bees, butterflies, and other important pollinator species, and that's it, that's a lot.
That's a lot. Counselor, thank you, you're a busy counselor, uh, Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, I also attended the swearing-in of our two newest officers, so it's great to see some, uh, new staff members. Uh, also wanted to pull off, uh, we talked about it, or we didn't talk about it, we ran it through on consent, but Main Street, uh, downtown Shakopee this summer is gonna have some food trucks on Saturdays, uh, looks like Saturday, July sixteenth, August twentieth, September seventeenth. So come down to downtown and enjoy the food trucks, and, um, also, uh, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but we got, uh, Rhythm on the Rails coming up this summer, so, uh, our downtown should be hopping, so, um, that's all I have.
Counselor, thank you very much, Co- Counselor, uh, Lehman?
Uh, scale Friday, what was it, June third? Uh, topics legislative update, that went about a half hour of discussion. The school, they're looking to try to get school administrators in Scott County more involved in scale, I know they're busy. And, uh, another half hour on future scheduling topics, so that was really the cross of that meeting. Hour and a half of three topics and, uh, small talk.
Councilor, thank you. Councilman Brennan?
Um, I attended a roundtable discussion with Scott County and local faith and service organizations. Um, that's in, trying to, um, work on Scott County's ARPA objective, which is to partner with organizations to develop housing, um, property owned by those organizations. Um, yesterday I had Spuck, um, and the construction contract for the Weston substation was approved. The commission was given a presentation on clean energy choice, um, and that presentation will be available to businesses who are looking at, um, coming up with their energy objectives. Um, we are presented with the MMPA load shedding policy. And this is an emergency prevention of total shutdown of the power grid. Um, and I asked, um, that Chief Tate be brought into those conversations, um, and be ma- made more aware of the policy. Um, and today I attended the Scott County Commission meeting. The commission was given an update on their strategic plan progress. Um, and then had a, um, initial discussions regarding their budget. That's all I got.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I guess for my, uh, mayor report, we had a, a quarterly county meeting. Uh, we did celebrate the, uh, Public Works Week, uh, last week, and thank you all for attending. Uh, the inner working group that was talking about the legislative session, that they, they didn't get all their work done, and we really wish that they would get together and finish their work, um, and come together. Um, today, uh, I had a chance to go to the retirement party for Dave Olowski, the Assistant, uh, School Superintendent that's been with our community for a very long time. And, uh, actually my, our children remember him as a principal at one of the elementary schools, so, uh, great day for him. And, uh, as a couple of councilors, uh, mentioned, uh, Sand Venture opens on Friday, I think at ten o'clock. And on Thursday, we, our series Music in the Park at Hubert Park on Thursday nights. Uh, uh, Picnic with the Police on June fifteenth, five to eight at Lyons Park. The Taste of Shakopee and Business Expo, June eighteenth, ten to four, it's a Saturday. And Rhythm on the Rails starts on June twenty-second, um, with their first concert on Wednesday night. And I'm looking at this list and going, we got a lot going on. And, uh, you know, taking some of these great events, it's, uh, a great, and it's what brings out the best in our community, so. Our administrative, administration, administration report, please.
Graffiti.
Yes.
We are getting absolutely swamped, and we've identified two separate identifiable tags. So we believe that there are at least two. But they are going and our, our Public Works crew paints, and then two days later, it's all graffiti again. They're hitting everywhere. They're hitting our brand-new playgrounds. They're hitting, and we're going to catch you.
Isn't there a reward for turning someone in?
Well, we, we, we're going to be working on that, but we're also, we've got cameras out, so listen up. You will be photographed at some point. Listen up. There will be a reward. Listen up. I may be out in the dark myself, if necessary, but we are going to catch you. And you are going to pay for all of the graffiti damage that you have caused, including, give me a ballpark for hours, Steve.
Uh, we're putting in forty hours a week on graffiti cleanup.
Forty hours a week on graffiti cleanup, and, and our Public Works Department is well-paid, so guess what?
You know, and if they would ask, we could probably give them some canvas.
Right.
Right?
I got paper, yeah.
Yeah?
They caught the guy that did my, tagged my jet, and he paid. He had to pay.
So, uh, yeah, we're, we're, we're pulling out all stops. We're spending way too much money on this. We'll also be doing a, a campaign for the public to get them involved, uh, through our communications department. Uh, and we're gonna talk about it, and sooner or later, somebody knows something, and guess what? I'm gonna give you some money.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think it's real important, it's, uh, really just petty vandalism and it's a, it, it, the, the impact is so large because we're hearing about cost, time and effort. It takes away from the community, especially on, it, it, it doesn't matter if it's an old thing or a new thing. Um, you know, if it's a youth, you know, parents, talk to your kids, get involved in their lives. If they got a spray can in their back pad or in the back of the truck, car, you know, and I'm not saying that that's it, but, um, I just, it's just, yeah, and it's such a, they think they're doing art, well, why don't you do it on your own house or something? I don't know. Why, don't do it on public property.
Right.
Alright, more?
No, I think I've pretty much covered it.
I like that. We're gonna get them.
Well, crime prevention had a standing reward, and I think you may be proposing to raise it, but, uh, um, I know that's out there already, so.
Every taxpayer in Shakopee is paying for the Public Works forty hours a week to pay for this.
Yeah.
Absolutely frustrating and disgusting.
Absolutely.
Alright, uh, thank you very much. Item number eleven, is there any other business before this council? Any other business? If not, Councilman Lehman, item number twelve.
We're gonna make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June twenty-first at seven PM.
I can second that.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Our meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-four. Thank you.